All speakers have three minutes. If you'd like to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Malner of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
And good evening. Welcome Glendale City Council meetings of September 13th, 2022. This meeting is called to order. We're not going to conduct a roll call tonight of attendance because everybody's here. So with that, our next two items are invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight's going to be delivered by Reverend David Tomb of Bellevue Heights. So if everyone please stand. Gentlemen, if you're wearing hats, if it's appropriate, if you'd remove them. And then after the invocation, if you remain standing, and we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend?
Would you bow your heads with me? Gracious and loving Father, our lives are given from you and we give thanks. These that represent the people of Glendale on the city council are your chosen leaders for such a time as this, and we give thanks for each of them. For those that are here tonight to present on behalf of different causes, we pray for them to be articulate and transparent, filled with confidence for the issue they represent, and may decisions made this night be by wisdom, discernment, and your inspiration. And Father, a new school year has begun and we pray for the safety of our children, the safety of our teachers, staff, administrators. Please download your creative and high thoughts that the new generations of citizens will be fully capable to live into your dream for the future, your vision for Glendale, as we seek to prosper, that all within our city limits and beyond will be able to work and meet the basic needs that we all have. And in fact, we ask that the citizens and businesses of Glendale will thrive as never before, driven by the knowledge that we live in a city, a land of opportunity where discipline, equality, and optimism will be rewarded. We thank you, Father, for life, for love, for community, family, and friends. May this fall, and the new season of life in Glendale be blessed beyond our greatest expectations, as we live in your love and grace together. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Councilmember Tomachoff, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay. Next on our agenda is approval of the consideration of the minutes from the August 18th, 2022, special meeting in the August 23rd, 2022 voting meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be offering two separate motions. First is for the approval of the minutes of August 18th, 2022, special meeting.
Second? Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Clark, second from the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have what you have with that motion carries. Councilmember Clark, the second.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And then I move for the approval of the minutes of the August 25th, 23rd, excuse me, 2022 voting meeting.
Okay. I want to be clear, August 23rd, 2022.
Yes, 23rd, 2022.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Turner. You've heard that motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys also have that. We do have a proclamation today declaring September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Glendale. I'm going to go down to the podium and Ben Goke of the Children's Cancer Network, who helped children and their families cope by providing educational, emotional, and financial support. So Ben, I'll come down if you'll meet me up there, please. So before I read this proclamation, I want to make a quick statement. Some of you might know, some of you may not know, I'm actually a cancer survivor. Several years ago, in fact, about 36 years ago, I think it was, I actually spent nearly seven months continuous at MD Anderson Hospital in Houston, Texas, going through chemotherapy. And it was a new type of chemotherapy, a new treatment that was being tested on myself and six other, seven other guys, and we were considered guinea pigs, but it was the very same treatment that Lance Armstrong ended up receiving after we approved the technology. And the reason I bring that up is because the childhood cancer awareness, something that's vivid in my mind, even though I wasn't allowed to leave the hospital, I had my shadow, which was a whole bunch of different cocktails pumped into my heart through a catheter. And when I'd go downstairs, just trying to, just trying to stay human as much as you could, bald headed and everything else, I would see these very, very, very young, very young kids going through chemotherapy, going through radiation, and it always amazed me on these little kids, how to them, that was life as normal. They didn't know that it wasn't normal, and how they accepted that and they figured out a way to just keep moving forward. And yet I'd go into my room and I'd see these other men going through the same thing as me and struggling with what they were dealing with. And I always thought to myself, you know, quit whining, go down and look at these little kids, and that's where you really see where it counts. So what you do is I'm very, very, very thankful for. So I want to read this proclamation. I'll give this to you, and I understand that you didn't want to talk tonight.
Well, good.
Okay. So whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children with 43 children per day, or 15,780 children annually diagnosed with cancer in the U.S., and whereas there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time, and 2/3 of all childhood cancer patients will experience chronic and even life-threatening secondary effects from toxic treatments like chemotherapy and radiation. And whereas 600,000 childhood cancer survivors in the United States are forced to live with a new normal because of the disease and toxicity of treatments, and whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out, and whereas Children's Cancer Network and other nonprofits are helping Arizona children with cancer and their favorite, or I'm sorry, with their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. Now therefore, Jerry P. Wires, Mayor of the City of Glendale, Arizona, on behalf of the city council, I proclaim September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I encourage all Glendale residents to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across our country. Witness whereof I have heron to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Glendale, Arizona to be affixed his first day, September 2022, and that was our Chief Clerk, Ms. Brown, and myself. Okay? I'll give that to you, sir. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
All right. Items on the consent agenda are routine nature. They've been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Do we have any speaker cards for any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 4 through 19?
Yes, Mayor. I move or you approve the Consent Agenda Items 4 through 19.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Hughes, second from Councilmember Clark, to approve Consent Agenda Items 4 through 19. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have what you have with that motion carries. Moving on to item 23. Wait, 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 wait. That ain't right. Item number 20, Ms. Bauer.
Resolution Number R 22-86, a resolution to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of Amendment Number 2 to intergovernmental agreement Number 100501 with the City of Phoenix for sharing of telecommunications facilities. Item 21, Resolution Number R 22-87, a resolution to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an agreement for accounting and delivery of water made available in the modified Roosevelt Dam flood control space under a temporary deviation to the water control plan among various participating entities, Salt River Valley Water Users Association and Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District. Item 22, Resolution Number R 22-88, a resolution to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Camp Verde for the use of the tax application for access and the ability to interact with statewide tax data provided by the Department of Revenue. Item 23, Resolution Number R 22-89, a resolution to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a joint agency agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for the roadway safety program for safety improvements on Olive Avenue between 59th Avenue and 67th Avenue intersections in the City of Glendale. Item 24, Resolution Number R 22-90, a resolution to the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a joint agency agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for the roadway safety program for safety improvements on Olive Avenue at 61st Avenue intersection in the City of Glendale. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Do you have any speaker cards for any of those?
No, sir.
Very good. Can I get a motion?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we pass and adopt Consent Resolutions 20 through 24.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, second. Councilmember Clark, approve items 20 through 24 on the Consent Resolutions Agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have what you have with that motion also carries. Moving on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce 25?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement and approve expenditure of funds to purchase radios from Motorola Solutions, Inc. No speaker cards.
No speaker cards. Any discussion? Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 25?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve item number 25.
Second. I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Hughes, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Yes, Mayor, I will explain my vote.
Go ahead.
On this item and the following four items, all our bids and contracts, all of them are for five years, and in some cases, longer than five years. As is my habit in practice, I believe that does not provide continuity to a four-year council member term, so I am voting no on this, nay on this, and on the succeeding items.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion does carry. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 26, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Brown and Associates Certified Inspection Services, Inc. for plan review and inspection services. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Can I get a motion to approve item 26?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item 26.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 27, please?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Arizona Generator Technology, Inc., doing business as Gen Tech for generator maintenance and repair services and to ratify expenditures. There are no speaker cards.
Councilmember, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I move for the approval of item 27.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hughes, second from the Vice Mayor, to approve. Any discussion from the council? Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Moving on to item 28, Ms. Bauer.
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Lamtech, Inc. for air testing at water reclamation facilities. There are no speaker cards.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 28?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move we authorize the city manager to enter into the described linking agreement with Lamtech, Inc.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Turner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion? Any questions? We'll conduct a roll call. Vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 29?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with AnyBackflow.com, Inc. for facilities, supplies, and/or services for Backflow devices.
Yes.
There are no speaker cards.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve item 29?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve item 29 on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Melner, second from Councilmember Tomachoff, to approve. Any discussion with the council? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion also carries. Ordinances. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 30?
Ordinance Number O 22-57, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing designated officers to deposit and withdraw city funds from designated bank accounts, directing all banks with city accounts to recognize the signatures of said officers on electronic fund transfers, checks for deposit and/or withdrawal, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is interim Budget and Finance Director Levi Gibson.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is a request for the city council to waive reading beyond the title and adopt an ordinance updating the city's signature authority for banking transactions. The city's banking signature authorizations are updated periodically due to changes in the organization. The city has various bank accounts that are used for day-to-day operations to receive deposits and to pay necessary expenses as authorized by the city council. Changes in the organization, including appointment of a new Assistant City Manager and an interim Budget and Finance Director, necessitate updates to the signature authority so that the city's business and operations and interests are not adversely affected. And that concludes my report.
Questions from the council? Is there a motion on item 30, ordinance 022-57?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance Number O 22-57.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Tomachoff, second from Councilmember Hughes, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? You can have a seat. Hearing none. Roll call vote. Councilmember Clark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Melner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries unanimous. Council comments and suggestions. Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to mention two items. This past Sunday was the anniversary of 9/11. To this day, I'm sure every one of us remembers where we were when we learned of the fall of the Twin Towers and the taking of over 3,000 American citizens. I hope we never forget. I hope our children never forget what an awful, awful experience that was for the entire United States. So I wanted to take a moment to have everyone reflect on that. The second item is going to be a surprise to Councilmember Melner. But many times over the summer, we have had people come up to the podium and kind of complain that perhaps you weren't doing all you could in terms of code enforcement in your district. Well, here's something that I don't think anyone knows. Excuse me. It was in June, I think. Councilmember Melner and I rode all of, what is it called? Country Gables? Country Meadows?
Granada.
Granada Estates. That's how well I know the area. Granada Estates. Everything on the west side of 59th Avenue, wasn't it?
67.
67th Avenue. Thank you for that geography lesson.
It was Glendale.
It was in Glendale. That I'm sure of.
You sure it was, Melner?
And we took the better part of a day. We started like at nine o'clock in the morning and we went to mid-afternoon, and we wrote down every violation we could find, and we came up with 145 violations. So to me, that demonstrates Councilmember Melner's commitment. When a constituent has a concern, he does attend to it. His problem is, is he doesn't tell anybody what he did. So I am telling everybody for him that he is a committed council member. He served as Chair of the Council Code Committee, or the Citizen Code Review Committee. This has been a passion of his, and anyone who thinks that Councilmember Melner isn't doing all that he can in terms of amending the code to better serve the citizens of Glendale doesn't have their head on straight. So thank you, Councilmember Melner.
Councilmember Hughes.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that I'll be holding a neighborhood meeting. We have announced a splash pad in the Sunset Park in my district, and we're going to have a neighborhood meeting about that park, what it entails, and receive input from the community so we can decide where we're going to go with that park amenity. That'll be coming up. It probably won't be until week after next, and we get notices out to everybody, but we'll get notices out to the neighborhoods that are affected so that they can attend that meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention a couple of really fun, successful events that occurred in my district this last weekend. On Friday night, we had Ballet Under the Stars at Saguaro Ranch Park. Arizona Ballet Theater Company came out, and even though there was the threat of storm, there was wind before, they put on a terrific production. There was a very large crowd. People had a terrific time, and the rain held off until after the curtain fell. So that was a fun event. This is, it's been done several years. This is the second year after COVID, and I look forward to it next year and encourage anyone by the time next year to look for the news of that event. And the other was that on Saturday, the Glendale Public Library System kicked off its 100th year anniversary celebration in the auditorium over at the main library there on Brown Street. And I hear it was a great time. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I do hear they had a tap dancing horse onstage or something to that effect, singing cowboys, folklorio dancers, the whole thing. It was a terrific presentation by our library staff, and it's just the first of many events that'll be occurring over the course of this year to celebrate the 100th anniversary of our library system here in Glendale. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay. I actually have to read this one because there's just too much. About two weeks ago, not quite two weeks ago, but nearly two weeks ago, Glendale hosted the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference in Westgate. It's a three-day event, brings elected officials from all of Arizona's 91 cities and towns, and also state legislators, state agencies, municipal vendors, lobbyists, utility providers, all to one location. This year's conference drew the largest attendance in the league's history, including close to 200 high school students and their advisors who attended the single-day youth program, and that included the MIAC students that Glendale has. The success of the event resulted in a direct economic benefit to the city as attendees filled hotels in the Westgate area and patronized local restaurants. There are many people who I really want to recognize for making this an event a success. I know that I'm going to forget somebody. Please forgive me if I left you out. We'll start off with Tom Belshi, Matt Lur, and the league staff for selecting Glendale as this year's host. The big push that I had, and I asked staff to really work hard to do, is to try to make this the best event ever so we could get back in that rotation, and I'll get to the rest of the story here in a minute. I want to thank Chris Toll from Luke Air Force Base, the management team at the State Farm Stadium, also Soretta's Candy Company for hosting tours during the event. I'd also like to thank local businesses who generously stepped up as sponsors to the event. Schwyer Coca-Cola, Desert Diamond Casinos and Entertainment, Rauch of North America. Now, a lot of people call that Roush, but it's Rauch. Camelback Ranch, Glendale, Brooklyn Bedding, Midwestern University, and I know that there's several others that didn't get listed here. I'd also like to thank the Glendale staff for their efforts to support the league in the planning carrying out of this event, such as Jim Burke and his team for supporting the youth program, our city manager Kevin Phelps, Don Besler, our contract lobbyist Marcus Delartino for participating on conference session panels, Michelle Yates for highlighting the city's Community Services Department and Community Volunteer Program, Brent Stoddard, Dan Torres, Ryan Lee for all of their planning efforts, and I guarantee it was monumental planning. Sue Bredding, the Public Affairs Team for their audiovisual assistance, and the CVB for their participation in the showcase event. Finally, earlier today, just this morning, my office was informed by the League of Arizona Cities that the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, Glendale Youth Advisory Commission, was awarded the most creative in our social media scavenger hunt during the conference. Now, I know that that was a lot, but we can all appreciate the efforts required to host such a large event. All of this was done as a direct result of everyone working hard to show the state that Glendale is the place to be, and no one puts on a better event than Glendale. So with that, I also want to recognize and hope that everybody will pay attention. If you know a veteran, if you are a veteran, please get them to come out to the event that we're having on the 24th, Saturday. It goes from eight to one o'clock, and it's called Stand Up for Veterans. The event literally takes care of veterans. It offers almost every service that you can imagine, free of charge, including lunch for our veterans. And it's not just their veterans, it's also their spouses, their families. So if they can get up to the old Thunderbird School of Global Management campus, which is now Arizona Christian University, this is the second year that they've hosted this. Last year, we helped more than 500 veterans and their families. It's all free of charge, 100% is donated, not a penny is allowed to exchange hands. And it's something I take a tremendous amount of pride in. I started this, but I cannot do this with all the people that show up to help make a difference, and it's more people than you can imagine. So please take a note, Stand Up for Veterans, Saturday, the 24th, eight o'clock at Arizona Christian University. If you're a veteran and you think your life's perfect, then come on up and have a free lunch. If you're a veteran or you know a veteran, bring them up there. You'd never know what you have the opportunity maybe to find out that you have, do you. We have court systems, we have attorneys, family law, they'll be given, folks will be given heart checkups, flu vaccines, you name it, pretty much if you can think about it, we're probably offering it. Plus, almost 60 different employers and more than 70 veteran service organizations that 60 different employers and more than 70 veteran service organizations that provide benefits and opportunities for veterans. So, uh, again, even if you're not a veteran, I'm sure that you know one. Bring them on up, give them a chance to, to maybe have somebody help make a positive difference in their life. So next on, uh, our agenda is, uh, our citizens' comments. Council makes this opportunity available to our citizens to bring information and business before this council that is not on the print agenda. Uh, I do have a few speakers here. I'm gonna ask the first gentleman that filled out, uh, the wrong colored card. Uh, I'm not scolding you, I'm just educating you. Whoever you are, Rick Smolik?
That's me.
Okay. So, uh, come on up to the microphone. Uh, normally you would fill out a blue card, sir. And, uh, we give you three minutes. Uh, all I need you to do when you get up to the microphone, state your name, uh, the district that you live in, if you know the name of the district. If you don't know the name, just tell us the crossroads that you live at. And you have three minutes, sir. Welcome.
I appreciate speaking in front of you. Um, my area is 51st and Sweetwater, where the, uh, water splash is supposed to be erected. And, uh, I, I wasn't, uh, I'm not really fully to, uh, speak in front of you right now because I need more information on the other parks that are li- are like this that you're proposing. I do have a question, though. First, are there gonna be bathrooms at this site?
Well, and again, normally this is not a forum for us to exchange.
Okay, okay.
But you present your questions and we'll take notes, and then we'll, we'll try to get those answers for you.
Okay. Um, that's, that's one of the things I like to, I like to have an answer to. The rest of the information, I see that we're gonna have a, a meeting on this project within two weeks. Is it gonna be here in front of the council?
At the park.
At the park. Okay. I can save my comments at that, at, at that time. Um, that's all I'm prepared to say right now.
All righty, sir. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Antonio, uh, Donnell.
Donnell.
Come on up, sir, if you would. State your name, the district that you live in, if you know it. If not, just your crossroads. We don't need your address. And, uh, you'll have three minutes, sir.
I think I call it Yucca. The Yucca District.
Your name, sir?
Antonio Doniele.
Okay.
6727.
Go ahead. I didn't need your address. I just need to know the district or the crossroads.
Okay.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Well, I'm here to find out, I've been here 44 years to find out the weather, the streets is gonna be completed, and the sidewalk, and the lights, so the children can go to school, it won't get run over. And I got a citation from the Glendale, the day I left the grass growing and in the sidewalk, but it's not such a thing exists, 'cause you guys never put it in. So I gotta cut the sidewalk, I knew easement, same my job. And across the street, it looks disgusting for the last 44 years. And you guys promised me you would get it fixed. But there was no money for $375,000 that on top, I paid all our, our year. We paid over $100,000. But they told me that I was giving it to county, not to Glendale. So the street was done, the sidewalk was not finished, and the lights never put on. I'm gonna be gone pretty soon. I'm 79 years old. How many more years I gotta wait? But there was no money. But Akaya, no, it's better. Excuse me a minute. Um, there's a nice big lake put up for $4 million, and the library, nobody uses it. But there wasn't money for that. Who paid for that? The taxpayer. And the people go on vacation on Glendale. And I've been here 45 years and I can't get it done. Why? What's the excuse? Now, it's not even been repaved. Everybody on the streets has been repaved. The way I live is not repaved. It's all cracked. It's not a chip like a back east when they got a sort of break, breaking down all over. What's the excuse of this? This, nobody likes it. They're telling me this is, they call a skeleton street. I never see any dead people running around in skeleton night. When are we gonna get it done, this? Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Warren Wolfang.
Can you get the picture on this?
State your name.
Warren Wolfang, Acateo District.
Thank you.
We're back here on the same property, but we got a little bit more information here for you. During the chapter 24, when it was being voted on and approved. When it was being voted on and approved. Hang on, I, I turned it off. That's why. Give me a couple of seconds here. The things don't wanna behave. When the chapter 24 was being approved, Rick St. John said this.
...adopted by the council is how it's enforced in that fair, equitable, and consistent treatment.
Let me play that again.
And then the code should be governed in such a way that as it's written and adopted by the council is how it's enforced in that fair, equitable, and consistent treatment.
We've been fighting about this property for 10 months now. It's not being enforced as it's written. Okay? It's showing favoritism here. That's unethical. You look at the drawing, this one right here. Same time from the beginning of the year. But the new code only allows a 40-foot driveway with 50% of the lot. The driveway and semicircle driveway combined exceeds 50% of the lot. Therefore, the circle driveway is not allowed and there's, there should be, and not allowed to be used for parking and maneuvering. Same neighborhood, same inspector, two blocks away. One's being enforced, one's not. This is favoritism. For some reason, this guy is getting favoritism and he's parking it allowed in the front yard. But let's be very clear about what their plan is. Since they got caught, this picture right here with the 55%, they're not gonna allow access to the backyard on this auxiliary driveway to try to get, to allow the circle driveway. Even at 55%, it's still not allowed. It's always 50% or less. This is what we're dealing with in the code compliance department. When they get caught, they cover it up. Why don't they fix their problems like they should? I can't make it any clearer. And this is your district, Vice Mayor. This is what's going on in your district.
Thank you. I'm not gonna try to butcher your name, but I probably will. Bud Resen- Resensky?
Yes, sir.
Is it pretty close?
Yeah, it's right on.
Okay, perfect, sir. Uh, if you would state your name, the district that you live in, uh, you have three minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Bud Resensky. I'm in, uh, Acateo District, 73rd Avenue in, uh, Orangewood. And my big concern, there's a, I wanna say a boundary between the east and west side of this city. And you can really tell the difference when you cross the city line in Scottsdale and see no homeless, no trash. And then you go to the west side of that line, the Glendale, trash and homeless. Uh, Mayor Adama, uh, we have confronted them quite a few times. They, I even, I, I forgot my phone, so I don't have the, the code nu- not code numbers, but, uh, the number of the concern that this, they wrote down. Uh, I complained first to the city finding out how to do this in June. And part of it was cleaned up in just the last couple of weeks from June. I, and then I, and then I get a, an email that it's all done. And it's not done. We still getting trash dumped along Friar and 73rd Avenue, all along Friar. At 73rd Avenue in Orangewood on the northwest corner, there's, I'm gonna call it a mesquite, uh, jungle. It's full of homeless. They're in and out there all the time. They go up and down the street on Orangewood pushing their carts. It's right across the street, I believe it's Desert Spirit School. It's between 75th Avenue and 73rd Avenue. And I don't understand why Scottsdale can keep it clean and we can't. That's my big question. I, I don't understand the system. I'm new at this. Could I make another comment, the gentleman about the...
You still have a minute left, sir.
Okay, the water, the water park. I, I consider his feelings about this because at 71st Avenue and, and Orangewood, 18 years ago, they okayed a soccer stadium there. Nothing has been done. We came to that first meeting and we asked why the soccer stadium, when I had a dozen girls in my neighborhood play softball, that they couldn't put a softball bu- field in there. And nothing has been done except for a small park with, uh, basketball. And I think there's a volleyball net. It's 73rd, no, 70, I think it's 71st. It's 71st and Friar. And that's all that's been done. So I can relate to that gentleman's frustration. Please, let's do something about the, this, the trash that's being thrown around. My wife actually saw a fight the other day between two, two homeless fighting over whose corner it was to beg on.
I'll, I'll need you to wrap it up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I'm a city manager. If there's someone you can, uh, in the audience, one of our staff, they can speak with Mr. Resensky on some initiatives we have and get his contact information. Sir, I'll, I'll contact you too as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you would, sir, state your name and, uh, the crossroads that you live at. You have three minutes, sir.
So I live at Camelback and 91st. Who actually has that?
Your name, sir.
Dave Lemon. Who actually has that? Camelback? Okay, so first off, off topic, uh, there's a high school on that corner. Right when they leave, there's about 300 kids that walk straight across the street. One of them's gonna get killed just simply jaywalking. You might wanna take a look at that. On the topic, I was here last month about the actual noise ordinances. Uh, code compliance is doing nothing about it. They're saying that they're complying as much as possible. I just turned this on because this is what I wake up to every morning at 5:30 in the morning. Anybody here wanna wake up to this every morning? 5:30 AM to 6:00 AM, this is what I listen to. This is how I wake up. This is them being in compliance. This is them being nice. This council approved it. They don't comply to anything. Code compliance is doing nothing about it. The only thing that saved me in the last month is the rain. They can't work in the morning because of the mud. That's the only thing that has saved me. When the rain stops and the monsoon stops, this starts up again. On October 15th, they will no longer be able to start at six o'clock in the morning. I guarantee on October 15th, actually, that's a Saturday, they may or may not be there. The 17th, they will be back out there at six, at six o'clock in the morning saying, "We can't communicate." But they can communicate when the rains come and they can't work out there. They can mass communicate when they want to, not when they don't want to. They wanna start as early as possible and they want me to stop complaining. I'm not gonna stop. I'm gonna be here at every meeting until this ends. I shouldn't have to wake up to this at 5:30 on any given morning, every single day. Anybody disagree with me on this? Code compliance should be on this. They're saying that this company is in compliance. I'm going, no. I'm 13 months into this complaint. 13 months. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the complaining of it, and I'm tired of listening to this. Anybody else wanna listen to this for 13 months, six days a week? Anyone? And have code compliance sit there and tell you there's no problems. They're complying just fine. Does it sound like it? Can we please take a look into this? And I would love to hear from you on a phone call of why the code compliance is allowing this. Can we have that? Can I have that, please? I've gone as high as I can. You're my last stop. Code compliance is gonna do nothing under any circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all have a good night.
Okay, there being no further business before the council, and I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. There are no objection from the council? We're adjourned.